And tell me when you're ready. Okay. Ready? Okay. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. It is four o'clock, February 18, 2025. Can we, city clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pacheco.
Present.
Councilmember Resendes.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember De Anda.
Here.
And Mayor Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so councilmember De Anda, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. City attorney, is any, are there any reportable items from February 4, 2025, closed session?
There was nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. So, public input, so this is a time for anyone in the honor to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of this, of this council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and, 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 sorry, state your name and city for the records and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you are joining us via Zoom using a cellphone, please press nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a max of 30 minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any items not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, our first speaker is Joe Tenasha, to be followed by David Beany.
Hello, my name's Joe Tenasha, I'm a local businessman. We have a couple businesses here in town and a farmer. I never wanted to come down here to your city council meeting, I'm glad there's not that many people here. But over the last two months at least, I've been trying to contact every one of you via email about Highway 25 and how it's affecting a lot of our businesses. We want a safe highway, we want a good highway, but we don't want to go in across our farm ground. People in this county spoke about preserving ag ground. You guys have an ag preservation deal? Think you got something on the agenda about it tonight? The county's working on one. Yet you guys keep wanting to take our ground and you keep building next to it and not getting input from people like me that are farmers that make 100% of our living farming? And you can't take the decency to check your emails? Please do, maybe it's in spam, but I'd really even like to have somebody just send me a message that I'm not interested. I don't care if you're on COG, LAFCO, I don't care what committee you are on, but people don't realize what's gonna happen out there on 25. We need a safe highway. We're all for that, all of us. We need a safe highway, we need a good highway. But we need a highway that not only is safe, but benefits the community of Hollister without just having people drive back and forth like about out of hell to go to work and come home. Maybe that creates jobs here. And that's not what's going on out there. And I don't even think you guys realize what the zonings are or what could possibly happen. And I never wanted to get involved in this thing, it only happened about 60 days ago. And everybody I talked to from COG that was on it years ago can't believe what's gonna happen. And I think people need to step up and at least have some communication. I know a lot of you guys are new to the political scene, but you need to get invested and you need to ask questions and find out why it was done or what's being done. Not everything, as I read in the paper, coming from multiple meetings around here, is bad. There's a reason some things were done. Not, I'm not gonna say I like them all, not gonna say I support them all, but I know, you know, compromise is something that has to be taken care of. We need to fill in this community and I need to be able to make a living. I'm tired of people sitting on the corners selling produce when that's what I do for a living and everybody goes and buys strawberries from. You ever see a toilet there? You ever wonder where they wash their hands or where they go? I'll show you pictures of it someday. And that happens to my fields out here in the county. But I really appreciate you guys if you look it up and give me a yell. Okay? Thank you.
The next public speaker, sorry, the next public speaker is David Beany.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I wanna talk just a bit about apprenticeships. When the electrical industry was first taking shape and wires were beginning to crisscross the population centers of the United States, electrical workers had it rough. And I'm not talking about walking uphill to work both ways type of rough. No, in that area, working on electrical systems had a 50% mortality rate. One in two workers died of job-related illnesses or injuries. To address this concern, workers came together to form the union that would become the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, or IBEW. This fledgling union worked to create safety standards and worked even harder to get employers to abide by them in a time when worker safety was not normally a consideration. Through the next several decades, the IBEW continued its focus on safety and also took up the mantle of training new employees to the high standards of workmanship that supported their safety goals in the form of formal apprenticeships. These apprenticeships followed a proven model of pairing inexperienced workers with experienced ones so that the craft knowledge was preserved and advanced through generations of workers. The IBEW also focused on new and emerging technologies to advance the craft and still do today. Later, about 70 years ago, the apprenticeship model took a leap in evolution, where before all training was provided on the job directly from journeymen, as had been done for centuries with stonemasons and other guilds, classrooms were added to the model. Now apprentices could get standardized training from instructors who each worked from the same written curriculum. This allowed all workers to supplement their hands-on experience with a high standard of academic training in subjects such as ACDC theory, expanding the knowledge base for these workers. Each of the 14 international unions and 23 crafts affiliated with the Building Trades Council has a similar tale to the electrical workers in their development of the pinnacle of the training programs that are the Building Trades Apprenticeships. I would like to extend an invitation to each one of you to visit one of our state-of-the-art apprenticeships so that you can see for yourself how the unions invest in training, making our workers the best trained and most highly skilled workers in the construction industry. Come and see what your residents are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beany.
Those are all the public comments for this portion of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move to the consent agenda. So, does any members of the council have any brief questions or comments about items on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would actually like to pull 7.3 to come back at a later date, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others?
I just have lingering concern. You know, we're about to potentially award a contract to Granite Rock and it reads to me like we've again gotten just a couple of bids to perform that work.
Councilmember Pacheco, do you wanna pull that and have us actually discuss it? Pull it from the consent agenda and have a discussion about it?
I would.
Okay, so let's pull, let's pull 7.4. We'll have a discussion about that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, other than 7.4 and 7.3, can I get a motion on the consent?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the, all the, all items other than 7.3 and 7.4 have been approved. Okay, so let's move on to a public hearing number, item number eight, an ordinance adding section 1.1, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're gonna, I'm, thank you, thank you, councilmember Morales. We're gonna look at the items that we had pulled, so let's consider item number 7.4 from the consent calendar, a resolution awarding a contract in the amount of $3,451,890 to Granite Rock Company and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract and other related documents for the West Gate Improvement Project, CIP-C1816.
So I know this is a project that's been going on for a long time, long before we got to council, and the Graff Road and Bridge Road and Fourth Street has been an issue. I feel like people are, we're learning the roundabouts, I think we're getting them down and learning how to use them, especially on 156 of California 25. My concern is just the overall, you know, I'm just using my gut, right? The overall low number of bids that we get when we put out like these pretty massive dollars, dollar amounts, and I know that we're using impact funds and we're getting government money as well, so we're not using like direct taxpayer monies. I just have lingering concerns about how can we get more bids for these projects? And it would have been nice, David Beany was in here and at a last meeting he had mentioned ways of being part of the process, just to get more bids, get a little bit more competition for these projects, so we can be assured that we're getting high-quality work and we're also getting some competition in there so we can just be the best doers of public funds that we possibly can. So I just really have that statement, really. And I know staff is working hard, they sent it back out to bid, we got another bid that was some competition there. Just my gut is telling me, man, it would be great to have more.
Yeah, is there any way that we can give a summary of some of that history for councilmember Pacheco's comment?
Some history as far as...
The bidding process and how we got to where we're at now with selecting Granite Rock? Yeah.
So, so previously, when this item went out, went out to bid previously and it was over budget, and I think that happened like right when I started with the city, we, we didn't use BidNet Direct, a web, web-based bidding software and website. We would advertise in, in the newspaper, advertise, notify the trade journals and the different trade associations that this, this item was being advertised for bids. So currently what we do is we use BidNet, so anybody who's a member of BidNet, any contractor, any company, and there's all different types of things, not just construction contracts, they, when we advertise something, when you put it on, when you, you're putting it into BidNet, the bid documents, you can select what it has to do with roadway construction, waterline construction, building a building, whatever it is. And you, when you check that, anybody, anybody, any company that's registered on BidNet, they get a notification that here, there's something that's out to bid nationwide, not just, not just in the local area. So that, that goes out and sometimes we get 3, 4, 500 companies that will look, look at it, they're notified and they'll look at it, but they're in North Carolina or something, so they're not gonna come all the way out here for a, a project this small, but. So it, it reaches far and wide through BidNet. We also notified the trade council that we have the, the agreement with, the PLA-CWA agreement. We notify them when something's coming up to bid so that they can then notify some of their member agencies that this project is coming out to bid. So it gets, it gets out there far and wide. We really have no control over who bids. Maybe they're, maybe they're busy with other projects, maybe it's not quite as big a project as they want, maybe it's too big for what they wanna do, maybe it's a specialty that they're not familiar with, right? Maybe they're okay doing roadway work, but maybe not underground storm and sewer and they don't wanna hire a subcontractor. There's lots of different things, reasons why they, why some companies may not wish to put in a bid.
Thank you for that.
Mayor, if I may add.
Go ahead.
That same system that Williams discussing was used for the section one grind and overlay that was approved in December, and on that project we received eight bids. So we're continuing to grow that registry and then they're ultimately gonna decide, is this a project that works with our timeline? Is there money to be made? Can we squeeze this in? In the realm of road projects, $3 million is not a huge project. For us, it's a big project, but when you have basically a ton of federal money out there through the infrastructure bills that were passed, the construction companies as well have a lot of bigger projects that they're bidding on as well. So, believe it or not, a three and a half million dollar project right now may not foster a lot of attention. The other one was a grind and overlay, which is a more simple project compared to building out a, a, a roundabout. And so we're gonna continue to grow that list and work with the, the trades council to get folks to register on there.
Okay, thank you. And, and I'm wondering, city manager, if you could just explain this, how, this registry? Because I, I know that I've talked to you about that, you have a link, you gotta register, then you get information, you get alerts on this, but maybe you can explain so that the public and, and all of us sitting up here that I understand this idea of building the registry?
Sure. So our procurement policy basically calls out when we have to start with, you know, where we can get three quotes, that's a relatively simple process, down to depending on the, the dollar amount, we're gonna talk about that on a, on another item a little bit later, what requires us to go out for what's called an informal bid, a bid, there's the construction law, the KUPCA that we follow, and then anything that's triggered via the PLA. And so what we do is any of those projects, we would put through this online registry. So we may have a service like a, you know, our janitorial contracts that come up. That would be something that in the past we would solicit, you know, through the newspaper and hope that folks would, would apply and hope that they looked at the paper at the right time, because that's only gonna run for so long. Whereas companies can now register with us, select the type of work that they want to be notified of, and whether we do something next week or next year, they'll get notified when we're putting that work out to bid. So that's something that local businesses can register for as well as, you know, businesses throughout the country, as William mentioned. So we're continuing to grow that, it's been online probably about a year or so, maybe a little less.
Year and a half, I think.
Okay, and we're continuing to grow that, so. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay, so do we need to open public comment for this one since we pulled it? Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and move to public comments.
We have no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna close public comment on that item. So what is the pleasure of the council, would somebody like to make a motion on this? We want to move forward, do you want more discussion?
I'll move to adopt 7.4.
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Pacheco.
Present.
Aye, Mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Resendes.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember De Anda.
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for that report. So let's move on to now, item 8.1, an ordinance adding sections 1.10, 0.060, processing claims to chapter 1.1, claims pursuant to government code, section 935 of Title I, general provisions of the Hollister Municipal Code. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Jennifer Woodworth, city clerk. Just have a very brief staff report for this item. So currently the city's process related to claims that are filed against the city requires that all claims go to the city council for approval or rejection. And so this process, we are proposing to update it to authorize and designate, sorry, delegate authority to the city manager to be able to reject claims and then also to approve settlements up to $25,000. Any rejections would follow the similar process to what we follow now, which is when claims come in, those claims are sent to our insurance adjuster as well as our city attorney and city manager. That process would stay the same, however, the authority would be able to go to the city manager to deny them instead. This is a much more efficient process and is done in many other cities. It oftentimes, depending on the timeline for the packet, the claims may take even a month or more, even when there's a recess, can take even longer to get to the city council for action. And so the claimant is waiting and often contacts our office to find out the status of their claim. So this would create a more efficient process and timely process for them. If there is any disagreement among the city manager, city attorney, and the claims adjuster, then those would still come forward to the city council for action. So that is the report.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments? Quick questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Stevens. Thank you, Jennifer, for bringing this forward. I get a lot of questions from my colleagues over the years and from the public, and it just seems like this is a much more efficient way of conducting business, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? Do we have any public comment on this one?
And this is a public hearing, and I will note that we do not have any public comments for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll close that. And so, any, any other questions, comments, any just further discussion from the council? Yeah, I'll just make a quick comment that I agree with councilmember, member Resendes, that any time that we can make a process more efficient, especially if it falls, it falls in line with common practice with other city councils, I think we should do that. So I think it's a, it's a good thing to do. Okay, so can I get a motion on this item?
Move to adopt.
I'll second. Roll call?
Councilmember Pacheco.
Aye.
Councilmember Resendes.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember De Anda.
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to item 9.1, the council business, a resolution approving the urban area water master term sheet and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with the urban area member agencies. May we have a staff report? Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, William, Vai, Public Works Director. The item before you tonight is the, the adoption of a resolution to approve the term sheet related to the financing of the Accelerated Drought Response Project, or ADROP for short, and the addition of San Juan Batista to the Hollister Urban Area Water Supply and Treatment Agreement. The Hollister Urban Area Water and Wastewater Master Plan, the Master Plan, was completed in 2008, updated in 2017, and again updated in 2023. The Master Plan provides a long-term vision for water, wastewater, and recycled water management actions. It also identifies a need for the region to begin preliminary work towards the development of additional long-term water supplies. In August of 2021, San Benito County Water District, Sunny Slope County Water District, Hollister, and San Juan Batista, and the county of San Benito entered into an MOU agreeing to update the Master Plan in order to confirm water demand forecasts. Excuse me. The 2023 Master Plan update presents a series of projects as well as alternatives considered to achieve a reliable supply of, of high-quality water to the residents of the urban areas in San Benito County. A key near, neat, near-term project is the ADROP project. This project is needed to improve the reliability of the water resources in times of drought, and it consists of the expansion of the West Hills Water Treatment Facility, conveyance pipelines, and the installation of five aquifer storage and recovery wells near Fallon Road. The city and Sunny Slope previously provided letters of support for the project for inclusion and grant applications, three of which have been awarded totaling $20 million in state and federal grants, about 40% of the total cost. The environmental documentation for this project expressly prohibits its use to accommodate future, future growth. So this, this project is to provide reliability during drought years. We treat the water, surface water that comes over the hill from San Luis Reservoir, we treat it, put it in the ground into the aquifer, and then when there's not as much surface water to treat to provide for our current residents, we pump that water then out of the ground and then provide it to the, to the customers. So it's like a, it's like a big storage tank, but it's just underground and we don't have to build the tank. San Benito County Water District anticipates issuing bond debt to cover the remaining capital costs for ADROP. And the city council, approval of the term sheet will assist in issuing these bonds. So basically the term sheet is, we're, we're not necessarily, if, if it's approved tonight, approving a contract agreement, these are just the terms to bring San Juan Batista into the mix because we're running, we, a, as a group are running a pipeline, the water district is running a pipeline to San Juan Batista to supply them with the same water that we get here in, in the city. That's gonna improve their water quality, which improves their wastewater quality, which we take out at the treatment plant once that could find a connection is made. So it all goes, it, it's all circular and it all fits together. So we do have a, a presentation that Dana, the general manager from San Benito County Water District's gonna give you the presentation, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks, William. Good evening or good afternoon, council. Again, my name is Dana Jacobson, I'm the general manager of the San Benito County Water District. I'm happy to present this item to you tonight. So some of you I was able to connect with previously on this item, and so for those of you that I've met with, I thank you for your time. And for those that haven't, I haven't caught up with yet, this may be new, it may seem like a big decision, so feel free to ask questions along the way. But I just wanted to say a few things at the outset here, that this is a really important milestone. It's a result of a long planning, planning process, so it's not necessarily something that's just kinda coming out of the blue. This is something that we've worked on together for many, many years. And as William said, this, this is not a final commitment tonight, this is just an interim step. The term sheet is non-binding, so we're just asking you to approve the terms and authorize city, city staff to negotiate contract terms with the water district. The final commitment will occur in a few months when we bring the contract back to you for approval. And perhaps the most important thing I wanna say at the outset is this project is needed to meet the needs of the current residents. It's not associated with future growth. If Hollister grows, we'll need additional water supply projects to meet those needs, but that, that is not on the table tonight. And I do have one spot of good news that I wanted to mention here at the beginning, and that due to the grant funding that William mentioned, the cost to your water rate payers will be less than we had previously anticipated. So it's certainly not free, but rates will not be impacted quite to the degree that we had anticipated. Okay, so as you know, the water district provides wholesale treated water to the urban areas of San Benito County, including Hollister and the Sunny Slope County Water District. That water service is provided through the Water Supply and Treatment Agreement. That agreement was first executed in 2013 with Hollister, Sunny Slope, and the district, and the result was a significant improvement in water quality for the customers of Hollister. It also has significantly improved wastewater effluent. This ensures regulatory compliance on the wastewater side. And so these improvements are only made possible because of the imported water that we bring in from the Central Valley Project, so the district has a contract with the federal government for water supply from San Luis Reservoir. And the only issue is that that, that supply is highly variable. In wet years, we kinda have too much water, in dry years, we don't have enough. So we need a place to store the wet year water for use when we need it more. And so the purpose of the project that I'm, we'll be talking about tonight is to improve drought resilience for the existing, existing customers of the city of Hollister. And so this will require an amendment to the Water Supply and Treatment Agreement. As William mentioned, this adds ADROP as an element of the Hollister Urban Area Water Project, and it... and it also adds San Juan Batista as a partner to the project. So San Juan Batista is probably 10 or 20 years behind where the city was with respect to meeting its drinking water quality and wastewater issues. So this will bring them back to where you guys are now. I mean, it'll significantly improve water quality for San Juan Batista. Just a quick reminder of why we're here today and the importance of imported water. The local groundwater in our basin is high in salts and minerals. So it's really hard. So it tastes bad. It fouls up appliances. And so that requires blending with the higher-quality imported water to alleviate these issues and meet the level of service goals here in the city of Hollister. So the use of imported water has allowed us to move away from the heavy use of water softeners, which just add salt to the system, which collects in the basin, and only exacerbates the problem. And of course, when you're using water softeners, it's hard for the city to meet its wastewater discharge requirements as well. Another need for the imported water is that the state recently... The Department of Drinking Water also put out new requirements for chromium 6, and the local groundwater exceeds these limits sometimes. And so the city of Hollister would not be able to meet these requirements without blending with imported water. Okay. So as William mentioned, tonight's action is just one step in a long process. In the early 2000s, it was recognized that we had a need for a comprehensive and collaborative master planning process to address the water supply issues in the urban areas of San Benito County. So in 2004, we entered into the MOU and completed the first master plan in 2008, and it evaluated a number of solutions to address the deficiency in water supply and water quality. And many have been implemented so far. As William mentioned, the master plan has been updated several times, most recently in 2023. This is all happening through a collaborative process that we call the Governance Committee. So there's an advisory body to the district, the San Benito County Water District Board, where the city of Hollister, Sunny Slope, San Juan Batista, and the county all participate, and all send representatives to shape this vision. So thank you for your participation in that process. We've had many major accomplishments since we began this process. In 2012, the city's wastewater reclamation facility was put into service. Shortly thereafter, in 2013, the Ridge Marks wastewater facility came into completion. And then in 2014, we upgraded the saltwater treatment plant. And in 2017, we added the West Hills Water Treatment Plant. And that's a state-of-the-art facility, and that doubled our capacity to treat water. Okay. William mentioned the 2023 master plan made several key findings. The first of which is that water hardness is still the key driver here. And so that's the most pressing issue. And the amount of imported water that we need is about 80% to meet the 180 milligrams per liter in our delivered water. The other key finding was that, at least as far as the water supply perspective is concerned, most years, we had enough water. But in dry and critically dry years, there's not enough water to meet the needs of our existing customers. There's a deficit of about 1,200 acre-feet per year. And this is the problem that ADROP is meant to resolve. So once again, ADROP is meant to improve drought resilience for the existing customers. And that was the first recommendation that was made through the master plan. And again, the SEQA coverage prohibits the use of ADROP for future growth. The other main recommendation from the master plan was to send water, treated water, over to the city of San Juan Batista. And so the city of San Juan Batista will be constructing a water pipeline from our West Hills Treatment Plant over to the city. And just to be clear, the city of Hollister and Sunny Slope have no financial obligation for that pipeline. Okay, so what is ADROP? William described it already, but it's the Accelerated Drought Response Project. It's a water storage project. It includes an expansion of the West Hills Water Treatment Plant to 6.7 million gallons per day. It includes five new aquifer storage and recovery wells over on the Fallon Road area over near the airport. And the purpose is to provide drought resilience. We would store excess water in the drought, in the wet years, and pull it out in the dry years to maintain your level of service here in the city of Hollister. This project is on an expedited timeline to take advantage of grant funding that's available to us. The latest capital cost estimate is about $15 million. So it is a significant investment, but we've done quite a bit to limit the impact to the rate payers, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. William already mentioned that we were incredibly successful, the district was, in securing grant funding for this project. So we have a full $20 million so far. That's about 40% of the project cost. We're hoping to get about another $2 or $3 million. We don't know if we'll be successful, but to the extent that we get more grant funding, that would offset the cost to the city of Hollister and ultimately, the water rate payers. Okay, so the detailed list of terms is in your packet. We've gone through them in pretty good detail with the city staff, but I'll highlight the key parts for you here. We think that this is a really fair proposal. We've gone out of our way to set it up to have the least impact on the water rates as possible. For the amount of money that the grant funding doesn't... I mean, the amount of cost that the grant funding doesn't cover, we will be securing bond financing. And so we're expecting about a $30 million issuance sometime this spring or early summer. And obviously, Hollister will be responsible for a share of this debt. But the good news is that we're only going to be charging you for the principal portion of that debt. The district will carry the interest on that debt. So just to be clear, we'll be providing an interest-free loan for Hollister's portion of the debt associated with ADROP. The capital cost will be recovered through a reliability fee. This fee will be assessed on all municipal water that's delivered, even that water that's outside of the city of Hollister. And in this case, if you don't take the water, you don't pay the charge. So when we first started this process, we were thinking that the reliability fee was going to be about $250 per acre foot. But due to the grant funding that we secured, we're now expecting it to be about $145 per acre foot, or about $50 per household per year. And I do know that the city's water rates were approved here with a higher number. And so what we're actually going to see, I hope, is that a lower cost than we had previously anticipated. And the last piece of this is that San Juan Batista will need to determine how much capacity that it wants to buy into. And so you've already paid costs associated with the water treatment plants. You'll be getting a credit in proportion to the amount that the city of San Juan Batista buys into. As I mentioned before, this project will work by treating and injecting water into the local aquifer. And it'll be recovering it in dry years. And this water will be directly delivered into the city of Hollister's distribution system. And so we provided a little bit of extra flexibility in the repayment for the city of Hollister here. When the water is initially stored, the Water District will carry the cost to purchase that water, to treat it, and to inject it into the wells. And the city won't be responsible for repayment until that water is actually recovered. And one more thing to note here is that the city's distribution system will need to be used for this project, and so we'll have to work out an equitable solution for the use of those facilities. Okay, so tonight, I'm requesting two things. Approval of the term sheet that's in your packet and an authorization for your staff to negotiate contract language. Sunny Slope has already accepted these terms, and San Juan Batista has provided their staff authority to negotiate the contract language. And just a reminder that this is an interim step. The final commitment will come back to you later this spring or early in the summer. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Dickerson. So any questions from members of the council? Councilmember Pichet?
Yeah, I just have like one primary concern, just because you guys are the experts. I mean, I've gone out to the water treatment facility, going out Forestry near 156 and the one on Union Road. I mean, the water comes out so clean. It's a great job you guys are doing out there, cleaning up the water and bringing it over the hill. I'm just curious as to like the discharge water that comes out of our filtration system. How clean is it when you pump it down into the ground and then back up? Is it comparable, or does it have to be cleaned additionally when you pump it back out?
Yeah, so the state requires that we treat the water to drinking water standards before injecting it into the ground. And when that water is recovered, it'll be recovered through the wells, and it'll be chlorinated at that time. So it won't go back through the water treatment plants, but it will be disinfected.
Which is... That's what we do now with our wells when we pump water, because we're blending this with groundwater through our wells. That's the only treatment that it receives from us, is we just add chlorine to chlorinate it to make sure that there's no bacteria or algae or anything growing in the water. So once this goes in the ground, it's high-quality water when it goes in the ground. And there's people way smarter than me have figured out, you know, that it'll stay there in that place. And about 80%, I think of it, will stay there. When we bring it back out, the only thing we have to do is just like regular groundwater. We just have to add chlorine to it.
Okay, so it's still a high-quality water product when we pull it back out and we distribute it to customers?
Yes, absolutely. Thanks, William.
Okay, other questions from council members? Councilmember Morales?
Thank you for the city session. I think that was very helpful to understand everything. You said that you received additional grant funding, and we looked at the overall cost at the time, at least that we saw the initial presentation that it will impact the rate, our constituents, at $50 a year. Is that going to go down? And do you have a projection in terms of what the overall cost will be?
Oh, that'll stay what it is. So that cost represents the lower amount.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales, if I can just add on to that as part of the presentation. So it was stated in the presentation that we have that in our rates. So I just want to clarify, it's in our rate study. And so we're going to adjust our rate study for this lower amount. Those proposed rates would come back to you as part of the rate study. So to clarify, right now, the residents are not paying for this. But that cost that Dana just mentioned would be a consideration amongst everything else that goes into your rate study, which is the entire cost of providing the water to the residents. So when we bring that rate study back, that lower amount that was in the presentation would be a factor, along with salaries, everything that goes into it. So I just want to clarify that right now, that rate has not been approved yet.
Thank you very much.
It has not been brought in front of the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. Thank you, Dana, for your presentation. Very informative. A couple of questions just to provide context. How long have you been working at the Water Board? Have you been there a while?
About three months.
Okay. Do you know if we've ever used... I can't remember a time that we've used the water basin water during a drought season. Do you know, or does anybody from your staff know if we've done that? And when we did that?
Oh, certainly. So the groundwater basin is the primary water supply source for Hollister, which has now been supplemented by imported water. So absolutely, during drought years, we typically rely on the groundwater basin.
So it's being supplemented right now by the water that we import from San Luis Reservoir?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have to approve this project tonight? Or are you guys operating fine just without it?
Well, we need the project. There's no doubt that we need the project. Clearly, there's a water supply deficit. So I'm not asking you to approve the project tonight, but I am asking you to approve some term sheet that would ultimately result in a contract. And so that final decision would come in a few months.
And the terms are asking us to approve a project, so it's $50 million. You've came up with $20 million grant funding from the state and the federal government. Who's going to pay the other $30 million?
A portion will be paid by the city of Hollister. A portion will be paid by Sunny Slope. And a portion would be paid by the city of San Juan Batista.
Okay.
And a portion would be paid by the Water District as well.
The majority of the portion's going to be to the people who get water in Hollister. Is that not correct?
The Hollister Urban Area, which includes areas that you serve and the areas that Sunny Slope serves.
Okay. And then when you say that the SEQA... Let's see, when you tell us that the SEQA, I think the words you said was, I forgot what it was...
I think it says prohibits the use...
Prohibits the use for future development. There could be potentially new SEQUAs after that for future development. Could there not?
There could be. You know, we have other projects in the pipeline that are expressly intended for future growth. This one is not. And so also, there's a grant funding limitation as well. So the grant funding is conditioned on its use for drought resilience. It's not for expansion of the water system.
So 50 years from now, you're going to tell me that we're not going to potentially give any of this water to future houses that are being built here in the city of Hollister?
Well, I think at that time, we would use all available sources that we had. So there would be a complete mix. But this project would only be used during the drought years, and so there would be a conversation at that time. You know, if it's the second year, third year of a drought, we'd get together with you, with Sunny Slope and San Juan Batista. There would be a collective decision made as to whether we would access that water or not. And so the city would have a say in that. And if it was activated, then there's nothing saying that you must take that water. We can't force you to take that water. It'll be the city's decision to take the water during that time.
Okay. And then you're saying that... Oh, you're going to get two to three more million dollars potentially to kind of offset the cost through grant funding?
Well, we hope. We'll be submitting an application this summer. That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any other projects? I just feel like the citizens of the city of Hollister are always the ones to carry the heavy lift, so to speak. And we don't have to approve this. We don't have to do this project. I understand that you're saying that we're giving the city manager authority to negotiate the terms, but within those terms, there's legal language saying that we're going to charge the customers of the city of Hollister $30 million more, and we don't have to do that. So what I'm getting at, is there any other projects that you have, or any other grant funds that you have, that you could potentially table or help offset some of this cost even more for the residents of Hollister at this time?
Well, yeah, so just to be clear, the city of Hollister won't be... The full burden of the $30 million won't be going to the city of Hollister, right?
I understand.
Yeah, and so just maybe less than half, so maybe 45% or so. And you would also only be paying for the principal portion. And so you wouldn't be... Typically, what would happen is there would be full cost recovery. But in this case, the Water District is willing to chip in some of its own money to offset the cost to the city of Hollister.
No, I understand that. Thank you. So what I'm getting at is, again, is there projects that you have or other grant monies that you have that you're, again, the Water Board could potentially table to help offset some of the costs that is going to be passed on to our residents?
I'm not aware of any additional grant funding at this time for this project.
Are there any guarantees that you can make to the city council that not, aside from the $2 to $3 million that you're going to be applying for, that you're going to apply for even more money to offset some of that cost after we approve the terms, whether we approve it or not?
Well, we're going to apply for any grant funding that's applicable, right? Clearly, we have a limited timeframe, so this project needs to be built by the end of March, I think, 2026. And so if we can find additional grant funding during that time, we absolutely would apply it to your obligation here and offset it.
What I do, what I'm concerned about, city attorney, is that sometimes we make these approvals, and then it just, they... Not just them, but people forget that part of that. I feel like we kind of just settle, we take what they give us. But is there a way that we can include language, having them come back and maybe reporting over the years, that they're specifically going after grants to help lower this cost?
Sure, that can be part of the terms that are negotiated by the city manager if you give him the authority.
Okay, I think that would make me feel a little bit more comfortable. I understand everything about your project. I appreciate you and your staff taking the time to explain it to me. Again, that's my concern. And I'm going to ask you again, as a personal favor, if this gets approved tonight when you bring it back, that you can offer us a little bit more concessions in that aspect. Does that make sense to you?
Sure, I'm happy to make a commitment to continue to look for additional funding.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Deanda, any questions? Okay, so I just, here's my question. I share like some of the concerns. Well, I'll say this, two things. What I love about this project is that it feels like we're being proactive about something. Oftentimes, we're not. So I feel like this is a great opportunity to make our infrastructure a little bit more robust. robust and be proactive about it, so that we're not scrambling when we get into drought and also other issues, right? So I would like for you to answer, because I'm concerned about the cost, of course, right? Of course, that's major, especially in a year when we're struggling with our budget. Can you just answer the question, if we did not move forward with this, what would be the cost, when, I don't say if, because it's just a matter of when, when we again enter into drought years? What would be the cost to us at that time?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an incredibly difficult question to answer, because we would need to have an alternative project, right? And the alternative project at this time is unknown. What I would say is that the reason that this project was chosen is because it is the most cost-effective solution that we have to solve the issue that we have. It's the right size for the magnitude of the problem that we have. We have other water supply projects in the pipe that would accommodate future growth or could be used instead. You know, we could use those at other projects to allow for this drought resilience, but then we wouldn't have that for the future, future growth, right? So it's really hard to know what that cost would be, but really, like you said, we don't wanna be in that situation where that water is not available and everybody is pointing fingers at each other. So, you know, these projects take ten, twenty years to develop, and so if we got ourselves in that situation, you wouldn't be able to have, or, you know, build a new project to accommodate the water supply deficiency in that timeframe, and then you'd be really in a bind.
Is there a difference in the cost of water during normal times when we're not in a major drought than when we are in a drought for us to, like, bring here to our city?
Yes and no. You know, our contract with the federal government is, is pretty consistent and those costs are pretty stable. The cost, you know, sometimes, if we need to go out and make spot market purchases in extremely dry years, that water is very expensive. And so it's more cost-effective to bring the wet year water, which is very cheap, here to the county, store it locally, and use it when we need it, rather than to try to purchase water on a spot market, which is really uncertain, and you don't know if that water will be available, and if it is, it's very expensive.
Okay, great. Thank you, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that this, this water reliability charge, this acre foot charge, we're currently paying that. It's, it's part of the rates that were adopted by San Benito County Water District for their raw water charge. So we're currently paying a hundred and seventy-five dollars an acre foot. It's scheduled to go up to two hundred and fifty on March first. That's, that's where, with the grant funding, they're, they're able to roll that back to about a hundred and fifty dollars an acre foot, and that's part of the raw water charge that we're currently paying that now every month with our, with our raw water charges in the bill that we get for West Hills Treatment Plant and La Salle. So we're already, we're already paying that out of our waterfront.
And that's one of the key reasons to bring the rates back, because without a change in the rates, you're still paying those fees and the cost of the water is, you know, significantly more. And so that's, that's the water that we pay for that we then sell to our customers. So like we said before, it had, that cost has not been passed on because the rates have not been studied since that has occurred.
So we're paying it from our, basically our fund balance, because we're not passing that cost on to the rate payers at this time.
Okay.
And the Water District has the ability to basically set their, their, their cost of water that they're selling to us, so.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you so much for that, I appreciate the answers. And I think the important thing is just so that the public understands the difference with and without the project, and so I think I just wanted to make that more clear. Okay, thank you for that. So I'm gonna check one more time, any other questions? If not, we're gonna move to public comment.
I'd just like, if you can Dana, just to give us a little bit more information on that interest-free loan, that sounded interesting to me, as to, you know, how, what the mechanics of that are, how are you paying for that again? Great presentation, it just kinda came out, it's kinda fast.
Yeah, sure. So the way we'll pay for it is that, so we'll have the bond issuance, we'll be recovering to, a portion of it from the City of Hollister and the other retailers as you take water. So when these facilities are used, we will, that'll generate revenues from the reliability fee. And the other part, the interest part, would be paid for by Water District Reserves.
Okay.
So we would carry that cost on your behalf as a benefit to the county.
Okay. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. The mayor brought up an interesting point about the water basins. I'm just wondering what, what's the status of them now? How full are they and how much water are we able to take on?
The water basins are in good shape. Storage is very high. Yeah, we're doing good there, as long as we continue to get imported water, the groundwater basins will stay in balance. And there's actually a state law that was passed in twenty fourteen that requires us to plan for sustainable groundwater levels, and so we are on track to do that. We have a plan that's been approved by the state for, that will ensure that we have sustainable groundwater levels into the future.
Okay, and then the city manager and yourself mentioned that this, the amount of money that's gonna be passed on to the City Hollister residents is fifty dollars at the lower end. Do we know what the higher end is, or do we have a range?
I don't know that I have a range.
Okay, but just so we're clear, it's fifty at the lower end.
Yeah, and the assumption there is that the average household uses about one-third of an acre foot, acre foot per year? That's, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to public comment. Do we have any speaker cards? Any comment cards?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close the comment. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion?
I just, I agree with Mayor Stevens, being proactive in a state where, when I was a kid, we had a major drought. It took, it was years before we had any significant rainfall. We're talking back in the eighties, you guys. I like the idea of being proactive. I like that the costs are offset by forty percent. Fifty dollars a year for some insurance that, you know, if not, if not, you know, it's gonna happen, we're gonna have a drought. And we get to share the benefits with San Juan Batista and the county. And, you know, we have a means to pay for it, but that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Comment, comment on this thing? Okay, so let's move forward then. Would anybody like to make a motion? We have to, let me just check in real quick. Do we have two motions to make, or do we do one motion just to pass the resolution?
The resolution authorizes the city manager.
For both of them together?
Correct, yeah, and it, there was no public comment, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can, I just wanted, I'll move to adopt, but I wanted to add on a friendly amendment stating, and then I'll let the city attorney put this language together, but that the Water Board comes back at a, let's say, specified amount of time, whether it's six months or every year, giving an update on whether or not they're going after grant funding specifically to lower the cost of this project that's gonna ultimately be passed on to the taxpayer citizen. That'd be my friendly amendment, and I'll make a first on that. Thank you.
You gonna have a second?
I second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pacheco?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, sir, for those, yeah, thank you both of you for that great presentation. So we're gonna move on to item nine point two, a resolution authorizing city manager to purchase security services for the twenty twenty-five Hollister Independent Rally without notice, advertisement, or competitive bidding, direct city, I'm sorry, direct city manager to obtain three quotes for service and execute resulting contract. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you know, we, we received direction to move forward and hold the rally for twenty twenty-five. And so we're currently wrapping up negotiations with our, with Roadshows Inc., who was at that meeting, to help us with the event. And as part of it, we're looking to augment the event with security services. And so our current procurement policy, as, as stated in the staff report, basically says that if anything is in, for this type of service, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, that we would have to go the route of the formal bid process. So like we talked about the bid net system and all of that, we would have an advertisement in the paper, the whole nine yards. For a service such as this, there are plenty of providers, both locally and in the surrounding areas, that myself and the police chief can work with directly to say, this is what we need, what are your hourly rates? And, and we do have a couple other items in there outside of security for cameras, metal detectors for beer garden, or beer gardens, and identification, verification, the scanners for IDs at beer gardens. And so what we're asking for is, I don't have the authority per the, per the ordinance to waive that, but the council does. And so what we would do is just ask that we go through the process of, of seeking three quotes. So I know that it's the way that the agenda item is written, based on the code, it says to not have competitive bidding, but that's the way the ordinance is written. We would still go through the, through the competitive process of securing three quotes and bringing that back. And then what we would do is we would be able to use that number to build into the budget when we bring it back in front of you for consideration with the rally, with the, with the contract with Roadshows as well. So we are moving at a fast pace to get the rally going with just, you know, from start to finish, a little less than six months. And so we thought it would be best to bring this item forward this way. We are working extremely hard to get this, this going forward. We're, we're looking to bring that promoter contract back at our next meeting for, for discussion and vote. And so, you know, with the costs, one of the things we are looking at is, you know, looking at possibly, you know, with, with obviously the input of the council, one way to keep those costs down is, the Fourth of July this year is on a Friday, some years, you know, Fourth of July may be Tuesday. And so with it being on a Friday, we would have Friday and Saturday, and perhaps we just hold it as a two-day event this year to help get us back on our feet and kind of reboot the, reboot the rally, right? It's been, this will be eight years since we've had one. And so we're, we're kind of starting over and, and rebuilding the brand and, and getting the promoters in or the vendors in and all the different folks in. So one thing we can look to bring those costs down is to go two days. We're also working very hard with securing sponsorship funding and starting to work with, with Roadshows on getting a package together of what that would look like. You know, anytime there's sponsorships, you usually get, you know, marketing or, you know, places in a, in a program and that type of thing. I'm, I'm happy to say that I just received confirmation and allowed to say publicly that San Benito Foods, our cannery, has stepped up to make a first contribution of fifteen thousand dollars to help us get off our feet or get it, and get the, get the ball rolling. So with your approval, we would reach out, we would start working directly with, with various security firms and then be able to plug that number into the budget and bring it back to you with a tentative budget and a contract with Roadshows Inc. at our, at our next meeting.
Okay, great. Any questions for city manager? Go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
So, thank you, city manager, I appreciate the creativity. I think I'm, I'm, I just wanna make sure that we're cognizant of like what the costs are gonna be moving forward. So I know that you have, you have authority under a hundred thousand. Given the, our recent presentation on the budget, our city, citywide, we're gonna see a reduction in city, city services by twelve and a half percent, and that's impacting every department. You know, do you feel like we are going to go over a hundred thousand dollars? And then where, if so, where is that money coming from?
Okay, I think if I have direction to do Friday and Saturday, that would significantly trim costs down. So we would take that authority forward when we're securing quotes. The other piece that we're doing is, is, is working through sponsorships. So, you know, I would aim to try to offset and make it as close to cost neutral as possible. I can't promise that. We would bring that budget forward as a tentative as part of the promoter or the agreement with Roadshows Inc. and let you make the decision from there. But it, it's our goal to try to offset as many costs as possible. I know that through Roadshows, you know, he's got his standard group of sponsors that have already shown some commitment. We just have to be under contract with him for him to, you know, start that and get that ball rolling. So this item today, this is one of the biggest, you know, could be one of the biggest cost factors, and so we wanna make sure to be able to have this. What the last thing I wanna do is bring forward the promoter contract and not have a firm number because I'm publishing in the paper or going through the bid net process, all of that, rather than picking up the phone and saying, we're looking for this, this, and this. What are your quotes and comparing those quotes and working in partnership with the chief.
Okay, other, other questions? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. In terms of sponsorships, I know that we had a recent conversation with the Chamber of Commerce. They want to see where they can partnership, partner with us. I think that's a good area of them to partner with us. They can reach out to other local businesses. Do you think that's a good idea, such as, I don't know, all the other local businesses, the chamber could potentially hit them up with the sponsorship to lower the cost to the citizens here?
Absolutely. And with the contract with Roadshows, you know, they're the experts in it, so what does X amount of dollars get you? Does that get you on the program? Does that get you on the back page? That's where their expertise comes in with aligning sponsorships to, you know, the marketing element of it. We, we love to just get a sponsorship with no strings attached, but oftentimes, you're going to promote them throughout the event and what does that look like? So they're working on that.
So that would be my suggestion, if we can, maybe just even reach out to HDA, reach out to the chamber and see, once you have that sponsorship letter, see if they can help us out with that.
Absolutely. And I know that they're all willing to partner, and HDA has been working to start to get a volunteer list going and partner with us on securing volunteers. They do a lot of volunteer work, and so they're, they're already on board. And we've already had conversations with Recology as well about the trash handling and all of that throughout the event, so.
Awesome. Yeah, and I know we're just taking questions now, so I'll reserve my comments for after public comment. Thank you, Mayor Stevens.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna turn it over to city clerk for any public comment.
Mayor Stevens, we have no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close public comment and move on to further discussion or action. Any, any comments?
I have one, but I'll defer to that.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Pacheco.
So in the past, I heard, you know, something about kind of a big, kind of potential partner, I mean, the Amazon being thrown around as somebody who might be able to partner with us. Is there any news about that, or do we need the contract going before we can like even discuss that?
Yeah, so there was a comment made at one of our council meetings about reaching out to them about supporting the fireworks show, and so staff has had some, some discussions. However, it's, you know, without the, the contract in place, it's a little premature.
And I can provide an update to council through email.
Thank you.
Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Yeah, good, great work. This is huge. I know you guys are working kind of under the gun here, so I appreciate all the work that you're doing. I'm certainly in favor of the two-day event to help lower the cost, and I hope that my colleagues would also join me in giving direction with that tonight. I'm really, really glad to see that you're putting together the sponsorship letter, and I'm looking forward to seeing how our partners can help us out with that. It's just all hands on deck, I think, at this point. So if people are watching, please, we need your help to, to bring back this most valued, cherished event for our community here. So please help us out, and a special thank you to San Benito Foods. Thank you all for doing that. We appreciate it, and we look forward to partnering with more businesses from here on out. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Deanda.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I would just like to say thank you so much for this. It sounds like there's a lot of strategic movement, and it seems like it's going smoothly so far, so just, great job. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. We've been having regular meetings with all of the department heads, along with a lot of their key staff members, so it's definitely been a team effort. And the good, good thing that we do have is we do have some folks on team that have been here for the rallies in the past. We do have some, some long-term employees that are able to, you know, shed some, some perspective on it and, and go back and look at all the reports and, and all of that. So I, I appreciate the, the commendation, but it, it has been, you know, an across-the-board effort.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. And I also want to thank staff and all members of the community and business owners that have been working diligently behind the scene. I mean, the timeline for getting this together has like, was like half of what ordinarily is a timeline for this event, so I appreciate the hard work. And I just, I will just say that overwhelmingly, the response to this has been, has been great. There's a lot of interest in moving this forward, and there's, so I have no doubt that there will be a lot of people reaching out to, including business owners, who want to be involved, because that's overwhelmingly been the reaction that I've gotten from business owners locally and just our community in general about how can we get, how can we help to make this happen? So I, with that said, I'm just going to leave it there, I will ask the council for a motion. Go ahead, councilmember Resendez.
Thank you. I'd gladly make that motion if my colleagues would allow me to make a friendly amendment to give direction to make the event a two-day event, a Friday and Saturday two-day event as well. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a second?
I second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pache?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to the next item, 9.3, resolution approving a lease with San Benito County Polytechnic Academy for certain space in the Briggs Building and authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the lease. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Stevens. So I'm happy tonight to bring forward a lease with the San Benito Polytechnic Academy, a new charter high school here in town that is looking to get opened. And so they have all of their approvals in place. The last step would be just securing the location. We did have, prior to January, we had Gavlin College in the building. And so the Briggs Building for the public is the parking garage. There is the first-floor retail where we do have the police substation that takes up about 15%, 20%. And the rest was Gavlin College. So the timing worked out well, where we have essentially a former school that was, that, you know, moved out. And so that helps keep costs down. It's already kind of laid out in a classroom setting, which would lead to, you know, some minor improvements along the way. But it really, it really worked out well. So the rent setup that we have is basically a two-year term. It's actually about 26 months because we're starting in March. So it would be the first, you know, the last four months of this fiscal year, and then two years out from there, with three one-year options. And then what would, what would happen is, is there's a, you would have an annual CPI increase based on inflation. That's all laid out in the terms of the agreement. They would also need to secure some of the parking spots. Last year, we did rent out some of the parking spots to the 400 block. We're doing something similar here, where they would start with 18 spots if they're required, if they need further approvals, that, let's say, up to 36 spots, they would, they would lease those. We have those at the similar rate that we, we did with the 400 block. There was actually a study commissioned, so we worked through that same study. So that's a fair and equitable solution. Both parties would be paying the same rent there. They would also be paying a annual contribution of $20,000 to help offset some of the maintenance costs and some of the costs there at the building. And they've been kind enough to kind of continue the tradition that Gavlin had, where when we do have the rally, we do use some of the facilities at times for rally activities. And so we have that language in there as well. They would have the ability to extend annual options, three one-year options. So this could end up being, you know, the last four months of this fiscal year plus five years. But the way that it's written right now, it is just out till the end of fiscal year 2027. And so I do have, in attendance, I have Nicole Prater and John Ramirez with the academy. They are here. And the way that we have it written here this evening is that you would adopt a resolution approving the lease for the Polytechnic Academy for certain space in the building. It's a little over 8,000 square feet. And authorize me to finish the agreement. If there's any minor tweaks, if there was anything major, we would bring that back. But we typically would do that in case there's any little back-and-forth legalese that their, our attorney or their attorney has pointed out. But we have worked through all of the main terms of that. They would also pay a prorated share of the utilities. I forgot to mention that as well. So we feel that this is a good deal for both parties. I will have, if approved, the next agenda item, which I'll get into, will talk about elevator repairs that this lease will help support the funding of. And so I won't get too far ahead of that one, but the way that it's set up, if this is approved, then we would have that other item. If for some reason that this agenda item is denied, then I would pull that, that other item. So I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have. Again, we have representatives from the Polytechnic Academy here, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you for that report. Any questions? I'm going to check on this side of the room. Okay. No, no, no. This side of the room, no. I have one question. This may be for the representatives of the academy, but if you can answer the city manager, that's fine, too. I just want to be clear about this Polytech Academy is, is, what grade levels are we looking at for this academy? Which students would be, this be, may be an opportunity to, for, or would be the population that would be served by this new academy? If somebody could just answer that for us.
Yeah, I could talk about the grades, but I think I'd rather have the representatives from the academy get up and talk about, you know, who they're serving and kind of what the plan is for the school.
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. So, thank you.
Yeah, if you could come up to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and city manager. First of all, thank you all for entertaining this. It's been a process. You all may have seen us here over the last couple of years working on this project. The project is set out, it's a public school, so it's open to all students. We can't designate which students it would benefit, or we would prioritize because it's a public school. So we would serve anyone in the county, and it's nine through 12.
So high school?
High school.
High school. Okay, thank you for that. Would you like to add anything to that? Ms. Prater?
I think just that we are a public, even though Charter is still a public school. It's very important that everybody understands that. We accept everyone. There is no requirement, just like any, any, any traditional public school, you, there's no picking and choosing. This year, we're looking for 200 students. If we have more than that, we'll have a lottery. And truly, we're a regular school. I know Charter is a little new for Hollister, but I've been in education for 25 years. I've been a union teacher, and I've been a charter teacher and administrator. Really, there's no difference. It's just quality of people, quality of people. So.
Okay, great.
Spread the word.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to clarify, were we talking about elementary, high school, college? Thank you for that. So we're talking about high school students, so thank you for that. Okay. I'm going to move it forward into public comment. Thank you to.
Mayor Stevens, we do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. So let's, let me get back to the council. Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Resendez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, city manager. Thank you to the representatives that came out here today. This is a huge, huge win, I think, for the city of Hollister. Kids learn differently in all different capacities, and they need as much choice as possible to be able to do so and to flourish. I am a teacher. I've also worked for charters, and I've worked for public. I've worked union, non-union. I 100% agree with what you said. It's about the quality of people there. I, for one, consider you a valued partner. I wish you all of the best. I'm grateful that the staff turned over that building that was ready for you so quickly. I hope, and I, I think that my colleagues would support it tonight, but I'm really appreciative of you being here, and I guess, yeah, all the best of luck to you. Let us know how we can partner with you even more. And then I would just say that when the time comes, maybe we can just help promote and push out some of their applying now, or, you know, the new school opening and whatnot from the officials, city platforms is, I would, one thing that I would ask. But, yeah, best of luck to you, and welcome to Hollister. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Yeah, we just had a comment. I'm really excited to have you guys at the Briggs Building as well. I think it's a great win, win like Mr. Resendez said, Councilman Resendez. I love riding my bike. I love riding all over the county, and I know I could ride my bike out to, you know, 25 in Fairview and go to the other campus, but I think it's really nice for, you know, students who maybe carry a big heavy bag, they've got all their books in there, that there's a local campus, too. And I think that a lot of students are going to be really well-served with that. And I'm just, I'm very happy at the creativity, just another win. Staff are just doing so great, and I'm, I'm excited.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Comment? So, yeah, thank you so much. I mean, I appreciate this item coming before us, especially so quickly after Gavlin left and just opened their new beautiful campus, because obviously, we want, we don't want the space to sit empty for too long, because that means, you know, public dollars, right? So if we can get that filled and rented, it's always going to be a win for the city, so I appreciate it. And that, it's sort of like the best, like a win-win-win-win, because we know how we're struggling with overcrowded schools and wanting to make sure that kids have other options. And I, and I am a social worker, and I worked with children for like my entire adult life, and I, and I will concur with what councilmember Resendez says. Kids learn differently. They need different settings. They need different options. And the regular high school experience, although we have an amazing high school here, may not be well-suited for all children. So I appreciate having an alternative. I also would like to just mention that I have granddaughters that go to a charter school. They do amazing. I've had nieces and nephews going to our public school. They've done well. And so I think both settings are great. It really did, it's really about the family involvement, the teachers, so I appreciate another alternative for the students of Hollister, so thank you for that. Okay, so let's move forward, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
I second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Pache?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, so let's move on to item number 9.4, resolution approving an inter-fund transfer from the Hollister Park Dedication Fund Development Impact Fee Fund to the Briggs Building Enterprise Fund. Staff report, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, following up on this item, so as you may know, the Briggs Building is just shy of 30 years old. And so we, as, as part of trying to get not only the, the school on board, but just for general overall maintenance, many of the components of the elevator are in need of repair. So we often are shutting down one of the cars, or, you know, William and his dedicated team are out there having to, you know, bring repair folks in and those type of things. It still passes its, you know, inspections and all of that, but as with most, most things, you know, there's, there's larger maintenance and, you know, the computer components, the controllers, the whole nine yards. So the Briggs Fund, the way that it's set up is a standalone enterprise fund, no different than, we talked about the water fund earlier, the airport. It's a standalone business. So when that building was built, it was built with FEMA dollars and through partnership with the, with the former RDA. And so it was built as a, you know, commercial first floor with a parking garage on the next few floors. And so part of that is, you treat it as a standalone business, just like we do the other enterprise funds. And so we work to look at the costs of a, of an extensive refurbishment of the elevator. That wouldn't be, you know, the, it's not tearing the shafts out and all of that, but all of the computer controllers, pretty much a very, very in-depth overhaul of it. And so in looking at that with contingencies for, for the construction, that was about $575,000. And so the fund, as it stands, is not in a position to pay $575,000. However, we do have the ability to do a fund transfer and basically a loan through an inter-fund loan. And so it's a, it's a formal loan, and what we would do is, we would take a three-year loan from the Park Dedication Fund. We would do a loan of $575,000. We would apply interest to it, which is what's called the LEAF, and that's the state treasury that a lot of municipalities use, where you invest your dollars at the state. It's overrun, it's overseen by the state comptroller's office. So that's usually a benchmark of how you would do your loans, right? The idea is, is that is what you would make if it was invested with the state. So it's a safe rate that we, that we benchmark against. For December, that rate was 4.62%. So what we would do is an annual payment, be a simple interest loan. So for the $575,000, there would be about, the park fund would earn $26,565 of interest. It would fund March 1st, and then each year, in right around this time, we would make an annual payment of just over $200,000. We would then use the lease revenue to offset that, and the lease revenue would more than cover this amount. So what we're doing is, is kind of a two-step. We're using the lease revenue from the school to then pay back the loan to a fund that, loan the Briggs Fund the dollars to have the elevator replaced. I think that that'll be a, it's a great strategy and solution to get the elevator repaired timely and before the opening of the school. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Mr. City Manager, you might have said this, but it was a lot. Let's say the school were to close down, and they would have to terminate the lease, then what?
There is a provision in the school's lease that they would have to pay their, their share of the, of this. And so if I take a step back into that lease, they would have, give me just a moment here. Essentially, if they were to terminate the lease prior to February 28th of 2026, there would be a lump sum of $389,000. The next year, it would be $222,000 and change, and then if, if it were in the third year, it'd be $55,000. So what that does is, that ensures that if something does happen, that we still are receiving the, the revenue to offset this loan. Great job. Thank you.
Other questions? City manager, you might have said this as well, and I might have just missed it. How long to pay it back?
It would be three years.
Three years. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so I'm gonna, then, I'm not seeing any questions, but I'm gonna move to public comment.
Mayor Stevens, there are no public comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Further discussion from council? Okay. I, I'm just gonna make a quick little comment. I, I see this sort of as a, like, sort of like what we do when we have like a 401K kind of a retirement fund, where we want to make, like, for example, a big purchase, like a down payment on a house, where we can borrow from ourselves, and then we pay ourselves back. I kind of feel like this is the same principle, and you do that only when you have made an, an analysis, your own internal, like, household analysis, like, does this make sense for me and my future? And I see this sort of as the same thing. So I think this is a good investment and a good way to move forward, especially to get that elevator fixed, because that elevator has been an issue for a very long time. Our kids deserve something better, so I think it's a great, it's a great investment. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just so proud of city staff. This is a really unique and just a great idea.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Can I get a motion from, from the staff?
A motion to approve.
Okay, well, let's just do a quick roll call vote.
Councilmember Pache?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Deanda?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Stevens.
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to the next item, nine point four, a resolution approving, I'm sorry. Whoops. Not, we're at nine point five, out-of-jurisdiction service discussion. Can we have a staff report? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Eva Kelly, I'm your planning manager with the Community Development Department. Tonight's item is a discussion that is just being brought back at the request of the City Council at the January 21st, 25, 25 City Council meeting to open the discussion for the City Council to talk about out-of-jurisdiction service requests within the City of Hollister and the County of San Benito. The city currently has no adopted policy or procedures for processing and/or approving or denying requests for extension of city services. The request was particularly related to the discussion of sewer services as well as kind of water under those same guidances. So given that we currently have no policies or procedures for city staff or the council or applicants to cover, we generally follow the guidance of Government Code Section 56133, which is a, it's a governing our local agency formation commission when they ultimately approve these requests. And I have provided that entire section in our staff report here briefly for your information. But given that guidance, the city staff's procedures generally when we receive such a request from an applicant or a property owner who's requesting to be connected to the city's water or sewer services or both, when they live in the county but are not, and are requesting our services to be extended outside of our jurisdiction, is they generally come in as an email request to either the Planning Department and the Community Development Department, or often to our Engineering Division of our Public Works Department. And so when we get those inquiries in, we direct the applicant to pay the applicable adopted processing fees for that. And city staff will review the quests, the requests, mostly looking at accuracy and location of nearby services. So they'll identify on a plan set where the nearest city lines are, the utility lines that they want to connect to. And then we will look if there is a case of an emergency declaration such as a failing septic tank where they're trying to connect to our wastewater services. We'll look at the documentation that they may have that would come from the County Environmental Health Department if it's applicable, particularly as it relates to septic systems. And then we work with our city attorney's office to prepare a draft out-of-jurisdiction services agreement that's between the City of Hollister and the property owner. And that service agreement would be reviewed and signed by the property owner. Staff has general terms and we use kind of past guidance, past agreements to draft those. But that agreement, once signed by the property owner, would come before the council for their approval and consideration. It's important to note that while the council does have the authority to approve that agreement, the terms of the agreement, the main kind of term that you'll see will be an agreement to annex into the city at such a time that it's called for by the city in the future. So a non-protest of future annexation to this county property that's receiving our services. But the ultimate authority to approve the extension of the service goes back to LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. So if the council approves the agreement, staff also gets council authorization to submit an application to LAFCO on behalf of the service requister. And then if it's approved, staff will work with the applicant to prepare that application. And then city staff, on behalf of the applicant, submits to LAFCO and LAFCO has the ultimate decision on whether the services can be extended. And then the, this is my last slide and then I'll open it up for your discussion and any direction or questions you might have. This is a very brief summary of that Section 56133. These are the, there's two different situations in which a service request could be, the property is defined within the LAFCO law. So one, the, the first section is if the property is located within the city's adopted sphere of influence, LAFCO can authorize that extension of services. There's no condition or requirement or, you know, emergency, not emergency. It's only that there is an anticipation of a later annexation. And that's where that term in our agreement with the property owner comes from of that they agree not to protest the annexation in the future. And then the second sort of request would be if the property that's requesting extension of services is outside of our adopted sphere of influence. The LAFCO may authorize that extension if both of the following are true, which is there's a threat to the health and safety of the public or the residents. So that's that emergency situation. And then LAFCO is required to notify alternative service providers before they make that approval. So with that, that's basically my background presentation and the item again was requested so that the council could have a discussion and potentially provide any direction to staff.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Kelly. Questions? Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. I'm confused because, Ms. Kelly, you said we don't have a policy, but I thought we did have a policy. So are we just referring to the municipal code in situations like this?
So we do not have a policy, nor do we have a municipal code guidance for providing details.
So we're following LAFCO?
Yes.
So previously, when these, I'm gonna call them exceptions, were made by this council, we didn't have a policy? We're just following LAFCO?
Yeah, so it was essentially every agreement was reviewed on its own merit. That would still be the case even with a policy, but a policy could guide both staff and the council and the applicant as to what terms and conditions the council might want to apply so that it's more equitable but correct. In the past, every agreement for this type of service was reviewed on its own merit with no guidance to really guide it. Those agreements were drafted basically with city attorney advice and accepted by the council and the property owner.
Wow, okay, that's really, that's new to me. I didn't know that. The other thing is, so like, let's, like, obviously, there's been exceptions to this rule made in the past by previous councils, has there not?
So there are exceptions in subsection E of the ordinance. And so they're mostly under the guidance of E1, which is an exception that allows for two or more agencies to provide service. It allows an agency with an agreement to provide service on behalf of another agency. So that's where you'll see a lot of the guidance of previous decisions were made under, for example, your San Juan Batista extension. San Juan Batista serves water. We are agreeing to serve on their behalf. And that allows the service agreement not to go to LAFCO for their approval.
Sure. And what happened with San Juan Oaks? What was the exception there?
The agreement was interpreted under the memorandum of understanding that is between City of Hollister, Sunny Slope County Water District, the county and the county water district.
So there was no emergency that it qualified under LAFCO law to make the exception to give them city sewer services?
It was qualified under this subsection E1 that MOU was utilized as the agreement between agencies.
All right. Well, I think, I think I've made my position pretty clear. And I think the staff has a, a good idea of where I stand with this. And I think that, that moving forward, I, I want the staff to, to take those considerations into, into concern. Just, that's for me. And I know we're asking questions, but that's just for me. What's going on with San Juan Batista? So I, I was wondering about San Juan Batista. I know that when we approved their agreement, I thought we allowed for like a 3% growth cap as well? Was that, do you remember that? Or that might be for William?
Yeah, I think that's beyond my knowledge off the top of my head. I would have to look into that.
As far as capacity, what I'm asked, what I'm saying, William, is I'm concerned about San Juan Batista continuing to grow their residential development and then utilizing our city source, services. When we signed the MOU with them, did we allow for them to increase their capacity by 3% more?
No, their, their capacity is set. You would have to amend the agreement.
Okay.
To allow. Now, the capacity that's in the agreement is way beyond what they have now, what, what they would be sending us now.
Yes, that's right.
But there's no, there's no growth allowed in there. You would have to amend the agreement.
Okay, thanks for reminding me of that. I appreciate that. Yeah, so I think those are all my questions for now. I'll probably have some follow-up questions, Mayor Stevens, and some, and some comments after. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from other members, members? So let me just ask a couple of questions. So just to make sure that I fully understand this. So this applies to any, any project, regardless of size. Is, is that true? Like, if, if it fits with it?
Yes. So this, this would be applicable to any property that is requesting City of Hollister services, water, sewer, or otherwise. Fire is governed by a different thing, but kind of fire, mainly water and sewer. Any property that's not within the City of Hollister city limits that is proposing connection to our service lines.
Okay, and I ask that question mostly because of my, I have like the concerns around annexation, right? And how we, how we do that. So how can we? Anyway, so yeah, this is, this is, I think, really concerning because it's a policy and I'm just curious, is there a way to create something that is more restrictive that will kind of lock in where, how we, how, how we annex or don't annex or allow for out-of-jurisdiction services? I'm not sure that I'm asking the question the right way. But I'm just, in, in terms of like, how do we make sure that we're being like very, 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 very conservative when we are allowing for annexation under like a policy that we have in our city, which can be easily changed or amended?
Okay, so first, what I'd like to do is have maybe Ms. Kelly talk a little bit about the policy that was in the proposed general plan, both from the policy side and then when the sphere was changed, that policy was still, that was unchanged of how that would work. And I think that may give you some good background too as to how it can be interpreted differently.
Sure, yes. So the answer to your question simply is, yes, the city could adopt policy as long as it's not outside of the LAFCO's laws of how this works and not in conflict with that. I, we have the authority to adopt our policies and procedures as we'd like. The 2040 general plan does include policy, and I pulled it up for you while I was in the audience here, and I apologize that I didn't have it in my staff report. But the draft general plan, or the 2040 general plan in the community services and facilities element, does include policy CSF-2.10, which is for water and sewer connections in city limits. And this policy is proposed to require all development that will use city water and wastewater services to be in the city limits, with the exception of a public health or safety threat in accordance with state law. And so with that policy in mind, staff have, when we've received requests, told applicants that, that this policy was being proposed in the 2040 general plan as potential guidance. However, with the general plan in referendum, it's a little bit up in the air. But the general plan does propose this policy. And then what would be helpful to implement this policy is an ordinance that specifies the specifics of how and when and where. I will just state that annexation is slightly different than an actual out-of-jurisdiction request. We certainly have policies about annexation proposals and could certainly strengthen, strengthen those policies. But this would be specifically to extend our services, not annexing the property. That is what's an out-of-jurisdiction service request is specifically.
Okay, so, so I'm, this is what I'm trying to get at, is my understanding is that there's ways that other jurisdictions have addressed this, they have more control and maybe they can limit how the, you know, the growth in their jurisdictions and, and especially around sphere of influence and annexation and all of that, right? So I have learned that some of our neighbors, like Watsonville, for example, Cupertino up in the San Jose area, that they've used through the election process, the urban growth boundary. And I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do to understand that a little bit better. And, and the only reason I, I, I just bring that up is because in the last two months, I've, I've been learning a lot about different ways that jurisdictions are grappling with the issue of growth, especially around concerns of their infrastructure and all sorts of other things. This is something that has come up and that I've learned more recently about what's happening in some of our jurisdictions. And I, I would like to understand this better. I would like to understand this better. And I was wondering if there's a way for us to understand that better.
So Mayor Stevens, what we could do is when, we could bring back an item, when we're talking about this item, we could also bring back, maybe we ask David Early to come out and speak with the council and give maybe just a primer and an update on how urban growth boundaries work. And you are right. I, I know that Gilroy has one, Morgan Hill has one, San Jose has one. There's a handful of them in the, in the Bay Area. And so if that's something that the council would like to explore, then we could ask Mr. Early, who has been our consultant throughout the general plan, to give an update to you all. And if you'd like to seek further direct, or give further direction, once you have that presentation, we'd be happy to do that.
I, I would like to understand that better. So personally, I would welcome that. I would welcome that. Okay, other questions or comments from the council?
I certainly, I just have a quick comment. I certainly think having a clear policy ordinance regarding, you know, providing services for out-of-jurisdiction, potential developments is going to definitely, I mean, it's gotta help staff, right? Make your jobs easier. I mean, a couple of developments have been connected to our wastewater treatment facility and they're not currently even in the sphere of influence. So, I mean, clearly it happens. I just, I kind of think I'm picking up what Councilman Resendez is putting down in the sense that I don't know that those were extenuating circumstances, putting the public health at risk with regard to wastewater treatment. So I would definitely like more information about this. But I definitely think staff definitely should have something to go on should another need arise.
Sure. Councilmember Morales?
I think with like some of the projects, it can be discussed in an open setting. So maybe during an agenda close setting, we can talk about those projects, I think that Rudy's talking about, like, and I can, the close session items as to why wastewater was approved for certain items, for certain projects and the consequences or the risk or liability associated with that.
Well, I know that LAFCO is actually working on putting together a list of everything that's outside of the jurisdiction that already exists. So I think LAFCO is doing that work now. The ones that have been done, I think this is outside of these. These are, this would be a, a, a new policy. And so the ones that, that were mentioned, I'm not sure if we would bring them into close. I would look to, to the city attorney. But as for the ones that are, that were mentioned, LAFCO is actually working on putting together an inventory. They've been working on that for the last three, four months and mentioned it at their last meeting that that was something that they'd be bringing forward.
I guess my question is, have the new council members been briefed on like the San Juan Oaks project? And why there was service provided?
Yes.
If I can, Councilmember Morales, I think originally that started off enclosed, but then it was brought out to public, if memory serves me correctly. It started off enclosed, but then we brought it out to public. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So the public's aware and I think that the council members and the mayor should know about that as well.
So perhaps what we could do, because bringing back any policy, especially in ordinance, will take a little bit of time. Perhaps what we could do is bring Mr. Early back to give an update on urban growth boundaries. And then that could help inform the decision or the direction. And then we can get direction on this as well and bring both back. But we can, we can ask Mr. Early to come back and give a primer because there's, there's a lot that goes into it. And that would give you the opportunity to ask many questions of him. And, and he's your contracted consultant for these types of matters.
I would welcome that. And I'm thinking, like, I'm just, again, process, this is a thumbs up kind of a thing, or do we have to do a motion for this one?
No.
Just direction.
Okay. So is everybody okay with the direction is to have him come back? And then, yeah, I think that will help greatly. Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. I don't know if we've take, if we're gonna take public comment or this, if we're required to. And then, so we've still got public comment. And then I want to reserve, I've got some more comments I want to reserve for after that if I can, Mayor Stevens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So maybe what, if, if we take public comment, you have your discussion, we could do the thumbs up on Mr. Early unless, because something could change.
Okay.
And then direction on this item as well.
Okay.
If that's something you want staff to bring back ASAP or wait until you hear from Mr. Early. Staff's happy to do either.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's do public comment.
Mayor Stevens, there's no public comment for this item.
Okay, so I'm gonna close public comment. And so Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you. I have some final thoughts. I, I hundred percent absolutely agree with Councilmember, Vice Mayor Pacheco, sorry, Vice Mayor Pacheco, that we need a policy. I know that we can't like exceed LAFCO limit, but we can make our policies more restrictive, can we not?
That is my understanding, yes.
So I'd like to take that. So I'd like to take that MOU loophole, that's what I'm going to call it, out of our policy so that we don't have leapfrog development or urban sprawl such as what occurred over there again. And just make it more restrictive to give us options to what this council would like to see it as, and bring it back so we can adopt it so that we at least have a guiding policy. Again, I, I swear to you, I did not know we didn't have a policy. I thought we did. So that's a big surprise to me. I'm trying to read my messy handwriting here. I 100% agree with the mayor in that we need an urban growth boundary, and it needs to go to the ballot for the people of Hollister to vote and decide on protecting our farmland. Other communities call it a green belt because what it does, it protects the farmland. It kind of takes politics out of this whole equation, so to speak. Let the people decide. Do they want to protect their ag land? Yes or no? And let them draw the lines as to where they want to draw it. So kudos to you. I 100% want to see that brought back in that discussion with Mr. Early as well. I have questions about annexation, but that seems like a whole nother topic, I think. You know, I'm just not 100% sure about that, but it is what it is. We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. And I know this is a bit of a stretch, city attorney. I would like for this council to send off, if my colleagues would entertain me in this, a letter to LAFCO letting them know that we are not interested in creating a regional sewer wastewater plant. I know that they're undergoing studies for that at this time, and that would be my ask, and I'll leave it at you to, to, to let us know where we should go with that. Thank you.
Okay, so is that final request something that we, that we would, that we would do separately? Or is this part of this agenda item?
It can be part of it because you're talking about a wastewater, a regional wastewater plant, and then extending outside services, so they're related.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, so I think that with that, so it, it looks like we're, we're asking for three things. We want to see sort of like a draft policy that has the language that, that is kind of in line with, with the comments of Councilmember Resendez around more restrictions. And I may not have said that right, but in general, what he said. And then bringing back Mr. Early to give us some information and answer questions about the, the urban growth boundary possibility. And then, then finally, I agree, I mean, I'm, I think we can, I, I'm in agreement with a letter about the, about not being interested in, in regional wastewater systems.
So you just need council consensus right now. I think I have two.
Okay, I'm seeing five thumbs up, so I think we got some good directions. I'm eager to, to see this come back. I think this is a really good move for us. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, so let's move on. We're going to come, go on to information reports, 10.1 committee assignments. Any council members have a report regarding activities on ad-hoc standing committees or any other reports? Councilmember Resendez?
Sure, I'll give it a shot. Thank you. We're continuing to meet with the fire, I don't even know what it's called because there's two of them. Negotiating, anyhow, the ad hoc committee. Well, we'll be having update for that, with that pretty soon, I believe. We met, the mayor and I met with COG legal team, and that was really informative, I'll be honest with you. They're just kind of looking for a direction from the current board members or the directors up there. And I think that more than anything, what, what, I think that the COG members and Vice Mayor Pache was there at one meeting, the mayor was there at another meeting, I was at another meeting, we're saying Highway 25, Highway 25, Highway 25, and transparency. Like, let's be honest, and let's be realistic about what we're going to do, and let's assimilate that information to the public, because there seems to be a lot of confusion around that. So I think that we're, I'm going to speak for the entire directors and the board of COG that everybody's kind of saying the same thing around that. So that's my update. Thank you so much, Mayor Stevens.
Okay, thank you. So I don't need to do a COG update because ditto what Councilmember Resendez said. Decided room, any announcements or committee reports? Councilmember Morales?
So I have the opportunity to meet with the Rapid Response Network for San Benito. We had guests from Santa Cruz and Monterey County. So the collaborative is trusted, community-based organizations that will do two things at least initially. One is create a 800 number that can be shared and staffed for San Benito County. And the second is training for folks who are going to staff the rapid response phone number and provide trusted information to community members. And the other training is for employers, to educate them on how to respond to raids and audits and also on for healthcare. So the, the lead agency will be LULAC. They'll be coordinating the training and paying for the phone number that will be shared amongst all the community-based organizations here. So if you're interested in attending any one of these trainings, please contact the President Irma Gonzalez. So also, just wanted to share some information. February the 22nd, from 9 to 1 is Earth Day. Happy to join that committee. February the 25th, from 11 to noon is the grand opening for the Gavon College Food Pantry. And March 16th is the library fundraiser.
Okay, great. Thank you for that report. Councilmember Pache?
I'm still working on getting committee assignments filled. I've been having challenges getting like people.
You mean commission?
Commissions, yeah. In my district, I know many people out in the county and in other areas. So working on that. I was able to attend a, you know, a Hills bookstore opened up downtown. So another business opened up. It was fantastic. A lot of people there. You could just smell the knowledge in the building. It was great. So I was really happy to be there, spend some money, and get some great coffee. So just want to report out, the new bookstore in town, check it out.
Great, thank you. So I will just like piggyback on Councilmember Resendez's about the fire ad hoc. There's like another one. It's a fire advisory, and the fire advisory did not meet last month. However, we will be meeting, so report next time after we, we have that meeting. And then also, just a quick little, a little super fun thing. I was able to be a judge for our local spelling bee at the Vets Hall a couple of weeks ago. It was super fun. We had elementary school kids, age kids and junior high kids, and I just will tell you, those kids are incredible. They were super smart, and they were spelling words that I was just so, like, I was just shocked. I'm like, what are we even talking about? I've never seen this word before. So I was just really excited, and I just want to thank the Office of Education staff who invited me to participate in that. It was really, really fun. And that's it. That's all the reports that I have. So we will move on to a council, city council request for future agenda items. So staff received three requests for, I'm sorry. I think we have one actually request for a future item. Development of a lobbyist ordinance, lobbying, sorry, ordinance and program submitted by Councilmember Resendez. Councilmember Resendez, do you want to say anything to that?
Sure, yeah. Essentially, the county just adopted an ordinance. Lots of our neighboring cities and counties have the same ordinance. I think San Jose also has one. It's just to identify any special interests, any lobbyists, anytime they come to the podium, they need to, well, two things. They register with the City of Hollister, I believe, as a lobbyist or a special interest group when they come to the podium. Just as the gentleman who was here earlier, he need, they would have to identify themselves as a lobbyist and who they're here to lobby on behalf. Thank you.
Okay, so that will be what the discussion would be at a future council meeting. So any, any, well, anyway, thumbs up? Are we okay with that? Okay, thumbs up for future agenda item.
Mayor Stevens, can I get a little clarification? I believe the request was to have a presentation. Is it the request a presentation or an ordinance?
Yeah, so we would bring back the item, give an update on all of that, and then we would take that direction. So we're not going to come back with a full-blown ordinance. It would be, the recommended action is to receive a presentation on the county's lobbying ordinance and program, hold a discussion on how a similar ordinance and program could be developed for the City of Hollister and provide staff possible direction. If we get direction at that, we would then come back with, with the ordinance. But we, you know, some things may not be applicable in the county, or, you know, we would walk through that with you, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we got five thumbs up, so we're, that's, we're on for that. Thank you. Thank you for that question, City Clerk. Okay, so city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to take a minute to thank the council and thank the public. I had the opportunity to travel to the League of Cities, similar to the, the seminar, the conference that the new mayor and new council member orientation, they also have a city managers' conference. And so I was able to attend that following our last council meeting. They had lots of great sessions. It's a good opportunity to grow a network and, and learn more from my peers. And so there were workshops that, that I attended regarding sales tax. They have a sales tax working group, as well as, you know, they have a big keynote speaker on the economic outlook for California, as well as, you know, general networking sessions, and then a session on, you know, the things that, that I have to worry about, such as, like, there was a mass casualty session where, you know, we talked to, where, where city managers and law enforcement come in and talk about events that may have happened, lessons learned. And so those, those are the type of events and workshops that they have there, and I was very fortunate to have the opportunity. So I wanted to report out and say thank you.
Thank you for, for attending. Good. Okay, so I think we're at the point for closed session, so I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you. Item 11.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency Designated Representative, City Manager David Maroney and Administrative Services Director Casey Astorga. Employee Organizations, Service Employees International Union SEIU Local 521, Hollister Firefighters Union HFFU Local 3395, Hollister Peace Officer Association HPOA and Unrepresented Employees. 11.2, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph 2 or 3 of Subdivision D of Section 54956.9 of the Government Code, Two Cases.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on the closed items?
There are no public comment for either of the closed session items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, we are going to take a break and then move into closed session. So I think we're going to meet here, so we're going to vacate the, the city hall chambers, and we'll take like maybe a 10-minute break. Okay.